Good evening to everybody. Bring this meeting to order. So first item on the agenda is election of the 2022 chairman and vice chairman. So Dr. Johnson, at this time, I'll turn the gavel over to you. First item on the agenda is election of the 2022 chairman and vice chairman. So at this time, I'll turn the gavel over to Dr. Johnson for election, I mean nominations of the 2022 chairman and vice chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Can you hear that? Okay. Yes, this is our annual reorganization meeting. The first order of business tonight is the election of the 2022 chairman. And at this time, I will open the floor for nominations.
Ms. Chairman, I nominate Dr. Scott Miller for chairman.
Second.
There's been a motion to nominate Dr. Scott Miller and a second by Mr. Jones. Any further discussion? Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the nominations before we vote.
So move.
Second.
Okay, there's been motion and a second. The nominations be closed. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and now at this time, we'll vote on the nomination of Mr. of Dr. Scott Miller as chairman for this year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have.
Can you hear me okay? All right, so at this time, we'll open up the nomination for vice chairman.
Ms. Chairman, I nominate Mark Epperson for vice chair.
Second it.
We have a nomination. Okay, then I will ask for a motion to close the nomination.
So move.
Second.
So we will vote on the closing of the nomination. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we will vote on the motion to elect Mr. Epperson as vice chairman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Mark. Appointment of clerk and deputy clerk.
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I would like to appoint again Michelle McClanahan for the clerk and Tracy Dobbins as the deputy clerk.
Do we need a motion?
Mm-hmm.
Entertain a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, committee appointments. I would like to start by just saying I would like to continue on the Laurel Board. I think that one needs a little continuity, so I would like to continue on that. We have the joint committee, Mr. Jones, Mr. Grant. Do you want to continue on that?
Sure.
And STEM Academy, Mr. Epperson?
Sure.
All right. And then Recreation Advisory Committee?
I do it.
Mr. Jones? And then the governor's school.
I do that too.
Mr. Jones? All right, any discussion or questions? Thank you all for stepping up for those. Meeting dates and times.
Doc, we need to have a motion to approve the committee appointment.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we've listed all the committee appointments. Do I have a motion to approve those?
So move.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Sorry about that. Do I do meeting ti- meetings and times?
No, I do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Dr. Johnson.
Okay, so at our organizational meeting, we set the date and times for the meetings. As in the past, we would recommend, administration would recommend, the second Monday of each month. And also that you hold the fourth Monday of each month open in the event that a second meeting needs to be held. With some, with a few exceptions, that being next month, which we talked about in December due to the budget calendar that the county has presented, we've had to move up some of our meetings, so we would meet on Monday, February 7th, Tuesday, February the 22nd. Also, the second Monday in April would be during spring break. We would recommend that that meeting be moved to the 25th. I'm sorry, I need to back up to February 22nd. School is not, is not in session on February the 21st, so I think we're recommending Tuesday, February the 22nd. And then the last would be the July meeting. Moving that meeting from the second Tuesday in July to the fourth Tuesday in July, July the 25th.
So what's the first meeting in February, just?
The first meeting in February would be February the 7th.
7/22, April 25, and July 25.
Correct. And we would recommend, Ms. Chairman, that those meetings be held at the Campbell County Technical Center, the boardroom, and on the occasions when a larger venue would be needed, we would, we would seek a suitable location.
Okay. Need a motion?
Yep.
All right, so entertain a motion to approve these meeting dates and times.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Maddox and a second by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, some of the formality is out of the way. All right, so now we have the opportunity to hear from the public regarding the 2023 operating budget. You had the opportunity to sign in. We have people who'd like to speak addressing, and this is just about the budget, nothing else.
Our first speaker for the budget is David Gifford.
Hello, I'm David Gifford. I live at 285 Easy Road, Lynchburg Post Office, but Campbell County, Virginia. I have two budget proposals that I would like to make for this coming year. First of all, I'd like to put $500 in the budget for overtime for Dr. Johnson and his secretary, so that they could craft and write a letter to three people, three groups of people, and, and follow it up with a phone call. That they want to tell them that in Campbell County, we believe in equity in educational funding, that there should be fairness. Not only do we have respect that boys and girls are treated equally, not only do we have respect that people of different ethnicities, ethnicities are treated equally, but we have respect that people are treated different, people are treated equally in terms of funding, regardless of their source of education. That people who homeschool, people who go to private school, or people use public schools should all have access to the same funds. In Campbell County, we don't discriminate against a person's educational provider. In Campbell County, we don't discriminate against a person's philosophy of education. In Campbell County, we don't discriminate against a person's political views on things like masks and other things like that. That's my first proposal. My second proposal is that we put money in the budget for a full-time teacher to teach the Bible as literature. I don't know what that's going to cost, but you know what a teacher costs. It needs to be a person who respects the Bible, because they wouldn't want to be able to teach, teach about the literature to tear it down, but to build it up and to help students understand about the plot, about the characterization, the literary features, and all the other literary aspects that are in the Bible. There's nine billion copies sold, more than any other book in the history of the world by far, the greatest book that's greatly influenced the history of Western civilization, and students need to understand the ideas that are in the text. Not just that it's an important book. There's thousands and thousands of manuscripts. They get, there are literary aspects in their own right, all those manuscripts. But anyway, we need a teacher. He can go, or she can go to one high school, first block, like say Brookville, go to another high school, like this high school, for not A-Day for one, B-Day for the other, back and forth, and then in the afternoons, they could go to the other two smaller high schools in the countryside. One teacher could handle all of this. You could teach Old Testament, first semester, New Testament, second semester. I don't know what it would cost, but I think it would be a good thing. Mr. Sanders told me he couldn't, was it not in the budget last year and couldn't do it last year, so let's get it in the budget this year and make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gifford.
Next speaker is Bobby Markey.
Good evening, everybody. Bobby Markey, 304 Woodhaven Drive, Timberlake District. This is my 12th year as a teacher at Brookville High School, and I'm here tonight to speak with you about the value of a dollar. Campbell County Schools values itself in offering a quality education that will provide every student the best opportunity to succeed once they graduate. It values its hard-working teachers and staff to provide quality education and curriculum that will prepare students to follow their dreams and pursue any career field that they may want to enter. It values its administration, who works tirelessly to keep our schools safe and secure, for students to learn without worry, and provide professional support to our teachers to continue to move instruction forward. As such, the school budget is a statement of this school board, how you value the staff and programs by communicating what you believe is the value of each dollar spent. By spending money on reading programs within elementary schools, you show that we value rich instruction that helps our students grow at their own pace. And by spending money on new buses, updated HVAC systems, and a new Rustberg Middle School, you show that you value facilities that are state-of-the-art and provide the best quality for our students and staff that they deserve. The problem is that the value of a dollar drastically changed this year. The inflation rate on the US dollar for 2021 was 6.8%. This means that a first-year teacher making $41,400 this year should have a salary increase of $2,815 in order for it to have the same value as when they were hired. So for your new budget, if all teachers, staff, and administrators don't receive at least a 6.8% raise to match the inflation rate, the school board would be communicating to their employees that they are valued less than last year, a message I'm sure none of you want to send. But then, it has been a goal of this board for many years to increase teacher pay to be more in line with surrounding counties. Thus, it would actually take an increase of about 10% minimum in this year's budget alone to send that message, not 10% in two years as being proposed in the next state budget. I know that is a lot to ask, but you all see the personnel reports every month, and you know that teacher retention is going to be a big issue this year, and that the staff that currently remain are very stressed and overworked. So how much do you really value them? That percentage from this year's raise is going to speak to that. Finally, we trust that you will provide a budget that's going to show what you, as a school board, truly value in education, but what about our board of supervisors? Will they value us enough to allocate that money? Or do they val, need to be reminded by you and the citizens in this room of what they should value in this county? So everyone that can hear these words, I implore you to attend the upcoming board of supervisors meetings and support the school board's budget and show them that you too value our children's education. Otherwise, we're just valuing political ideologies over our own flesh and blood. I look forward to the day that my three-month-old son gets to be a graduate of Campbell County, which at that time, I believe will be the greatest school division in this state based on the valuable decisions you're going to be making for our generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
The next speaker is Doug Behringer.
Good evening. Congratulations, Dr. Miller. Congratulations, Ann. My name is Doug Behringer, 277 Holland Court, Rustberg, Virginia. I looked for a preliminary budget to help prepare for tonight. I didn't see one. I'm guessing that this is just a very entry-level meeting, so I will move on. One of the concerns I've had for some time now has been that our budgets need to be more readable by human beings. For example, I pulled down the current budget. It has several columns on the left-hand side. One is R slash E. I guess that's revenues and expense. You could put an R and an E instead of a 1 and a 3. Fund, 205 is in every case, so I'm not sure what that means. I'm guessing it's General Education Fund, but it'd be helpful if you had that. Major account is a category with numbers, 61112 is an example. Object, whatever that is, 2210. Call center, I'm going to guess that's where the money goes. And program, both, all of these are numbers. It would be very helpful if there was a legend that said what each one of those columns is, and some way to translate what they mean. It would also be helpful if the, if the document was published in Excel or CSV or some other format that we can pull down and manipulate and reorder, reorganize, and do some of our own number crunching. When I was looking at some of the actual descriptions, which you would think would be helpful, in a subcategory, a very small subcategory called alternative education, no explanation, there's a row called, the description is employee cost FICA, there's four of those, employee cost VRS, employee cost health insurance, group insurance, disability, that's four of those in that section. Our rows like stipends, stipends, bonuses, internal services, travel, other charges, purchase services, et cetera, might be helpful to have a little more explanation for those of us who are not privy to all the discussions that go on among the board and the administration. It would be very helpful if instructional and maintenance costs could be mapped to the specific facilities, particularly if folks start discussing the cost-benefit analysis of school consolidation in the future. It would be very helpful if instructional costs could be mapped to the curriculum item, such as science, math, history, et cetera, not just secondary education or instruction. It would be very helpful if core, core program costs could be distinguished from programs mandated by State Department of Education, state legislature, federal Department of Education, and federal law. It would be helpful to identify the revenues associated with those programs, so we could make more informed decisions when deciding whether to implement programs or to tell the funding agency to pound sand. In other words, we should not be lured into implementing programs simply because an external agency is providing funds. We should be able to turn down the program and the funds in an informed way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Behringer.
There are no more speakers.
That is it?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we will close the public hearing at 6:50 PM. Thank you to the speakers. And now we will hear matters from the floor. We have several speakers who signed up. Please be respectful of the three-minute time limit. First call, Charity Torrance.
Good evening, I'm Charity Torrance, and I live at 1127 Rutgers Road, Concord. I was a public school teacher for 10 and a half years, and I've homeschooled for eight years. My husband is a teacher here in Campbell County. He's taught 17 years, and he is teaching at Rustberg High School. I presently homeschool my two daughters, and our two older sons are at Rustberg High School and Rustberg Middle. Because of the past two years that we have had with our two sons being in the Campbell County public school system, I'm assuming that you don't have any idea, you don't have any idea of how open the internet is on our school laptops, and also on the unsupervised cellphones, and how this is affecting the ability of our teachers to teach in the classroom. So here's what we have. As a school system, we've assigned all the middle school and high school students their own personal laptops, and we rely on the AUP policy and the IT department to try to protect our kids. But we're being very reactive at this point, instead of proactive. Here's the problem, students are distracted by technology all day long. This year, I don't know if you know this, but YouTube has been almost completely open. Students are finding ways to get around all the protection that is put in place. People are playing video games all day, watching movies, emailing people during class time instead of focusing on the work that the teacher is trying to give them. Students are failing, and then they're given time later on, at the end of the nine weeks, to make up a bunch of stuff. But I know personally, we have had tons of experience in our home where we are having, we are, my husband and I are overwhelmed with the task of trying to protect our children from what is happening online in our society. So here's my solution. I would like to propose that you explore purchasing the GoGuardians suite. This is to give teachers the power to manage the laptops in the classroom when they're teaching, and also there's a program called Securely, where parents are sent a weekly email about what sites their student has visited while using the school laptops. I kind of feel like the government gave us all this funding for all the students to have a car, but then they didn't take into account the funding that is needed from each locality to provide seat belts and brakes for those cars. So I am, I am pleading with you, please educate yourself and learn about what is happening in our online world with our students. There are three resources, The Social Dilemma on Netflix, Our Kids Online Documentary on Vimeo, and access.org. And if you want any other details, please feel free to talk to me. Thank you for your time and attention to this.
Thank you, Ms. Torrance. Does anybody else get this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, next to sign up, Crystal Coman.
Good evening, I am Crystal Coman from Alta Vista. First, let me say thank you to every Campbell County school employee who has done their utmost in keeping the children of this community in school. I know what this entails, as I personally experienced it last year. Despite the millions of dollars of ESER money other locations have received, they don't seem to feel the same obligation and duty for their students. For those in this audience who might need to know what ESER money is, it's the billions of dollars the government has doled out to schools as part of the COVID money. Most would assume that it's supposed to go to COVID mitigation strategies, to safety, and the like. It's amazing, though, what you can find out when you start to trace the money to states and individual school districts, when you start to trace the very many things this money can be spent on under the COVID umbrella. It's even more amazing when you find that some of the criteria needed to get this funding requires checking off certain areas of concern. Imagine, if you will, the surprise, or not, of finding the areas of equity, racial disparity, cultural competency, and the like embedded within. Can it be any wonder, then, that the Virginia Department of Ed has inserted mandated cultural competency training for teachers and added this proficiency to their evaluation tool? Can it be any wonder that this education department is initiating a social, emotional learning curriculum for our schools that is merely a smokescreen for the diversity, equity, and inclusion vocabulary embedded in critical race theory? Can it be any wonder that teacher resource and professional development module, excuse me, modules provided by the Department of Ed include the lovely titles implicit bias, Teaching in Support of Black Lives, Nice White Parents, Addressing Race and Racism, to name a few? There were even some that were specifically entitled Critical Race Theory, but these have mysteriously been deactivated. I am not even going to get into the resources and lessons provided to back up the new social studies curriculum. I, for one, am getting increasingly disgusted with receiving no response regarding the questions that had been asked of this board since August of last year on these issues. We asked very specific questions. We don't want comments like we're not doing it here in Campbell County, or even the more incredible comments suggesting that one of you didn't know how to be any better at communicating or being transparent. We want answers on how you are attempting to check those boxes. We want answers, specific steps, specific people, who will be responsible to ensure that we aren't doing this, especially when we all know there is a whole lot of money to be gotten at the expense of what's right. God bless the children of this county, and God bless America.
Thank you. Next, Jacqui Mendez.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Jacqui Mendez, and I'm in Evington, Virginia. And I believe 2022, but before I start, I want to thank you, congratulations on being the chair, and Ann Parker, congratulations for being now up on the dais. But I believe 2022 will be a phenomenal year for change, dialogue, and action. We hope that you're open to listening and engaging the Campbell County community to address our concerns. Let's talk about critical race theory, or critical response training, the concepts under the banner of CRT, which is equity, diversity, and gender fluidity, are all concepts meant to drive children and parents from their natural social environment while promoting Marxist principles under the guise of social awareness? CRT is still part of the Virginia School Board curriculum. Parents are now aware of the clandestine efforts weaved into the school curriculum. I said we are now alert to the efforts to weave equity and gender fluidity into lesson plans. And the parents of, the parents and communities of Campbell County will not allow this to continue. We will fight back through our votes. The school board committee, among others across the state, have decided to ignore with impunity the majority of wishes of parents and citizens of Campbell County. You and the Virginia Department of Education, the Federal Department of Education, will not be allowed to continue. Parents want you- Parents want you to discuss the real issues at these meetings, the education of our children. So here are some practical solutions that I came up with. Not much, thinking outside the box. Board members engage your constituents in town hall meetings through social media or quarterly sessions to inform them of issues concerning their children, logistics, renovations, budgets, and more. Have a Q and A session for schools with the principals to share information concerning their children, staffing issues, lunches, transportation, and much more. School boards, create a Facebook page or Instagram to communicate with parents in the new age of technology that, we're connected that way. How about building a platform that can host your comments and those of your constituents, every board member up here? It's a neat idea. It's what we need is to think outside the box. So we have been asking for six months to address our concerns and we're still not hearing anything. Last board meeting, I asked, I gave a list of questions, we're looking for answers, no answers. So how long is it going to take? I mean, we are civil and we're engaged citizens, so we need answers. And the trust, you know, Mr. Miller said that, how can I gain back the trust? These are the first steps. And parents and community members, we're not going away, we're just going to grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez. Doug Berenger sign up? Okay, Mr. Berenger.
I'm still Doug Berenger and I still reside at 277 Holland Court, Rustburg.
Yes, you are quite familiar.
This is our, this is our first meeting of the new year and I hope we can make a new beginning and work together to prepare our next generation to lead and prosper in the world that we are leaving behind for them. This means not only teaching math, real science, and real history, but also instilling in them the core values that America was founded on and that have made America the greatest nation the world has ever known. Again, to give credit where it's due, I thank and applaud this school board and the administration and the very visible steps you have made to respond to and address many of our concerns. There's still many outstanding that remain and I still think that moving to, back to the vote tech for our meetings will be a step backwards. You have made a good start though, in good faith, and like I said, we still have a long way to go to rebuild the trust and support of all citizens of Campbell County. A couple of ways to continue this process is to publish a transparent and readable budget that we can understand without a secret decoder ring. Another is a great, another is greater transparency and clarity in communicating often complex issues and decisions you make on behalf of the students and your care and the citizens who elect you. I had a very good conversation with Dr. Stanley and a couple of the other administrators after our last meeting and they raised a couple of really good points that I had not considered, but that have a bearing on many of the issues we have debated during the past year. He pointed out that many of the positions that you take are not defined by you, but are, are not defined by you or even the Virginia Department of Education. Many positions are codified into law by our legislative branch and must be implemented by both of the departments at state and local levels. It would be very helpful if you could help be more transparent and clarify more which parts you have control over, which parts the state board of education has control over, and which part of the legislature has control over, so that we'll know who to direct our comments to going forward. With this in mind, I'm trying to be quick. Okay, the important thing is we need to hold correct people accountable for decisions that we don't support. And legislators are very sensitive to our, our concerns. We need to make sure that they know it. With all this said, I'm hopeful that my fellow citizens will extend to you the opportunity and grace to rebuild our trust so we can move forward in a more productive and beneficial manner for the sake of all concerned. Unfortunately, I suspect there may be a couple of you who have even more work to do in order to rebuild that trust and to restore good feelings and recover from the damage done. I hope it is not too late for a couple of you already. As an individual citizen, I will do my best to help build a greater spirit of cooperation and trust going forward, but I must also state that in my role as chairman of the Campbell County Republican Committee, I am bound to honor and implement the will of my constituents even as you are bound to honor the will of your constituents.
Thank you, Mr. Berenger.
I can assure you, I will fulfill my obligations and I urge you to do the same and we will have your back, Ann.
And last one we have signed up is Mr. Phil Stevens.
Good evening, good evening. My name's Phil Stevens, I get to live in the Rustburg district. I truly debated about talking about the issue that I wanted to bring up tonight, but I wanted it to be on record. It happened to me in public and I thought my response ought to also be in public. I ran for the school board a couple of months ago and one of the biggest surprises that I ran into was the dishonesty and lies perpetuated by others about me, my family, even my church. One such example is found in an article published in the Lynchburg Advance entitled, "A Fox Guarding the Hen House." It was written by Elizabeth Banks. Mr. Phillips, you probably remember this article since you posted it to your Facebook campaign page. You didn't contact me to see if any of it was true, but I guess you thought it would further your own campaign. I understood you took it down later, but the damage had already been done since it had been feuded hundreds of times and shared to other pages multiple times. I've never received apology, but I'm sure one's coming someday. I've never talked to Ms. Banks, the author of this article, nor have I even met her, but she decided to write a completely dishonest political hit job on my campaign. My mom used to say, if it's only half the truth, then it's a total lie. The article stated that I had a son who attended private school, which is true, but the article neglected to mention that my oldest son graduated from Rustburg High School last year. My oldest daughter is a senior this year graduating with honors, I might add, as a proud dad. And I have another son who is in the ninth grade who is in the special ed program, which we love, by the way. The article also mentioned that my church was starting a private school. Oddly enough, this school doesn't have land, building, not one teacher, not one student, and we haven't even raised one single dollar for it. If Ms. Banks, the author, actually cared about getting the information right, maybe she should have asked me why does Windfall want to pursue a school? And the answer is simple and much of the reason lies in the decision, specifically in the lack of courage that this school board displays each month as it dodges these important issues. Since July until now, the issues of CRT, transgender bathrooms are by and large swept under the rug and not even a single vote has been made on these issues. The members of Windfall and even now the community is catching on that we may have been blindly believing that the school board had our children and their safety in mind, but what has been clear is that you haven't had the courage to take a simple vote. It is partly your lack of courage and leadership that helped our church realize that if there was to be a school that focused on morals and safety, then we would need to step up and do so. I want to let you know that this article also said that I had divided loyalties and all kinds of junk. I need and I want Rustburg schools to succeed. My son is in the special ed department, we absolutely love what they have been doing and we appreciate what they've been doing. We need these schools to succeed. Thank you.
Leave that to everybody. Thank you to the speakers. All right, for order of business now, the next approval of December 13th meeting minutes.
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion approving the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Payment of the bills. Need a new person.
Make a motion, we pay the bills as long as the money's there.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the bills? There's a short list this month. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion, any opposed? Motion carries. Action items. Dr. Johnson.
Chairman, at, at one of our meetings a month or two ago, it was suggested that, or questioned why the school board did not display the flags nor say the pledge of allegiance at the start of the meetings, like the board supervisors was a point that was brought up, we discussed, and the members were in favor. And Mrs. Parker contacted me a week or two ago to offer a formal agenda item that we begin each school board meeting beginning next month with a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
Mrs. Parker, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, sir, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the moment of silence pledge of allegiance and have the Commonwealth of Virginia and American flags prominently displayed at all school board meetings.
Hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to say that it's long overdue. I don't know why we've been remiss in this. Seems like sometimes things just happen and no good answer, but I think it's long overdue. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Next meeting, we will start with the pledge and a moment of silence. Do we have, we have flags, so good, okay. All right, acceptance of donations. Ms. McClanahan.
Tonight you have twenty donations for your approval that were listed in advance of the meeting on board docs. Unless you have specific questions, I ask that you approve them as presented.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'd just like to add that that was over $10,000 worth of donations last month to our schools and I really appreciate that. All in favor of approving the donations, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Consideration of non-resident tuition, Ms. McClanahan.
Tonight you have five students being listed for approval. The principals have already endorsed them. I ask that you approve those unless you have any questions.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consideration of requests for supplemental appropriations, Ms. McClanahan.
Tonight you have one appropriation that was listed in the board docs. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve it as presented.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Johnson, consideration of designation of alternate staff member attending board meetings.
Annually, I have to recommend someone to be my designee at a board meeting in the event that I couldn't attend a meeting and I would recommend that Dr. Stanley be my designee.
Need a motion?
Move.
Second.
There you go, good for you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any question about Dr. Stanley? And it is Dr. Stanley now, right?
It is.
Where is he? Stand up. Congratulations. Yeah, yes, thank you. All right, I will make every effort to refer to you as Dr. Stanley. It's got a good ring to it, doesn't it? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Consideration of personnel report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have the personnel report in front of you unless you have any questions, I'd ask that you approve it as written.
No questions, I'll move approve.
Are we fully staffed?
We are. We had a couple of resignations right before and after the break, but we have some people that are starting in the next couple of days or next week, but we are.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion, approve personnel report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are you feeling better?
I am, thank you. Getting there.
Thank you. All right, have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
If I could take thirty seconds too to just mention that last week, as we always do, the first week we get back after the break, we sent out the survey to teachers or our licensed personnel, asking them their intent to return next year. So this month's personnel report is pretty short, but next month in February, it will be indicative of that because it'll list all the people that know they're retiring or not returning next year. So given that, we host our annual job fair that's coming up at Brookfield Middle School February 5th. We've also already got a few people signed up for that. We hope it'll be as successful as it normally is. That's when we begin hiring already for next year, so that'll be February 5th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sisk, consideration of religious exemptions.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Today I have two families who have requested religious exemption for their children. They have applied properly and filed the proper paperwork. I recommend that you approve.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Sisk. Ms. McClanahan, state and local statement of economic interest.
Just a reminder that form is due to me by February 1st, please.
Thank you for that reminder. All right. All right, matters from the board. Report of the superintendent, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Actually, I have just, I have a couple of things. I wanted to share, next month will be, we will get into the budget, but I did put a few slides together just to background information of what we are working on. We are building the budget, we're just getting information, as I said before, you know, the majority of our budget comes from the state. They haven't, the General Assembly hasn't even convened yet, so a lot, lot to come. But I will just tell you that a little bit of information that we are getting, and this is the year where they will create a biannual budget, a two-year budget. It's the re-benchmarking of all of the standards of learning and standards of quality, that those are the standards that are set regarding staffing and things of that nature, so all of that will be reviewed. Just some highlights that we've heard that came out of the governor's budget, and I gave you a hard copy because we don't have the technology here. And Mr. Berenger, if you'd like at the end of this, I'll just give you mine and you won't have to take pictures of that. Just some highlights, our local composite index, that is our local ability to pay, or you will hear us talk at times, our LCI, that is an important index, all funding comes off of that, but it basically says that almost seventy percent, a little over seventy percent of our funding comes from the state. We're at .2913. There's some hold harmless funding in the, in the, in the budget. That is because they use 2020 data and we were, because we didn't have a full year, for example, when we shut down in, in March, you know, there was a lot, the numbers are really skewed for the re-benchmarking, so there's money in there to, for hold harmless in the event that we were to lose any. As you heard, the governor and also the governor-elect has talked a lot about salary increases. This, the governor's budget had a five percent salary increase in '23 and an additional five percent in '24. And then there's some other small additions and tweaks to the different lines that are in this, in the, in the state budget. Flip on over to, there was one interesting piece in this governor's budget. You'll notice that there's some school construction funds, three million. three million allotted to Campbell County if that holds, but and it would, I think has to be spent by '25. So that was in there. The next slide is on the VRS, and I don't even know who's operating it and I can't see it. So are we on the slide with the VRS rates? Okay. So there are no changes to the VRS rates this year. We are projecting right now a four percent increase in our health insurance. And I'm having some discussions with, with the county and exactly will we absorb all of that increase in, in the fund, in the health fund. For many of you, we're self-funded. We have a fund so we can, we can absorb some of that cost, or do we want to the employer? We've already committed to not passing any of that increase on to employees. So we just got to figure out exactly how that will be handled. The next slide talks about ADM. That's our average daily membership. Big piece of our budget is how many students we budget for. So if we budget obviously aggressively and those numbers don't materialize, then the revenue, we will have a revenue shortfall. If we budget too conservatively, we'll get additional dollars, we'll get more dollars in that late in the year, we have to do supplemental appropriations for, to, to put that in the budget. So over the next few weeks, prior to you getting a draft budget at the next meeting, we will be working on shoring up those projections. We most, most of the time, we land somewhere either on the Department of Education's projections because it's generally the most conservative or hours or somewhere in there. The next slide just shows the budget timeline of what we will get done. And then last slide is the next steps, and this is the interesting piece. So the governor has put out a budget. The House of Delegates will do their budget, and then the Senate will do their budget. So we, we're trying to find where this is going to land as they're doing that. Which means, it's likely, this year especially, that we adopt a budget that we will have to go back to and amend sometime later on in the springtime, depending on what the, what happens in Richmond. Okay? So that's, that's really just a quick overview. You know, there's a lot of work going on right now, you know, to build that, and we will have a draft, you know, like I said, to you at the next meeting to review. And I could, there's nothing, no new initiatives or anything like that in that, in that budget so far. So, any questions on the budget?
The construction funds, does that need to be spent for new projects?
No, I think it can be renovations and just general capital improvement.
Okay.
Yep. So that would be interesting to, to talk through that at the joint committee level and then up at the board level, especially with the supervisors and how that fits into our CIP.
And this joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, is that hard?
That's on, that's on the eighteenth, yes.
And that's at the Haber Building?
That is, been proposed to be at the Haber Building in their workroom. I'm going to call it the workroom, the smaller of the conference room.
And at what time?
Let me get that to you. It says seven? Okay, let me, let me confirm that and get it to you. Okay?
Okay.
Any other questions on that?
What date was that? What date?
Eighteen.
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 It's in here.
It's on the small chart.
Oh, it's on that one. Oh, right. Okay, good.
But I still will confirm that time to be sure.
I was just looking at it here.
It was in your folder.
Yeah, I see that now.
Any other questions on the budget?
Forward to seeing it, look forward to seeing what revenues look like.
Right. And then the last thing, take just a second to speak to the questions that have been brought up. And Ms. Coman, I would recor, I would like to maybe have a conversation with you one day this week or early next week by phone so we can talk. Let me, we haven't ignored those discussions. We've tried to answer them the best that we can. For example, today, when, and when we got the information at, I believe it was the last meeting, I immediately put it out there and said, here, this is, this is a proposal of the training that for, for critical competency, yes. Cultural competencies, too many CRTs. And, and I put that out there so that you could see that and make comment and do that. We are reviewing that. This morning, we met as a senior staff, you know, and began, and not began, worked again, reviewing all of that. We're, how's it coming, making sure that we understand it, read it properly, what we have. But we don't have any more than I reported on last time. But I can assure you, the code says that the board will adopt a policy by the year '23. We're, we're months away from maybe, maybe even making a recommendation that, of what that, that policy might would look like. Okay, but we are working on it. So we cannot answer all of the specific questions that you've raised, but we're not ignoring it either. We're working on it and trying to, to methodically and in a measured way work through that so that we get it right and get it right for Campbell County, not for Richmond. And that's what we're doing.
Just what?
I just wanted to, to share that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, matters from the board. We'll start over here to my right. Brant.
Okay. Spoke with folks at Brookville High School and Mrs. White told me that the course will be performing tomorrow night at seven o'clock. If you get a chance, go out and see them. The concert was postponed prior to the Christmas break. Choir director Rebecca Ray and other students were interviewed for the Living of Virginia show, which is aired prior to the break. It really highlighted how talented a lot of our students are at Brookville. Also, the band director has started up a pep band recently and the girls' basketball game. And the pep band, also known as the Maroon and Gold Puppa Band, will be performing once a week at the home basketball games. I know last week they had a breakout of COVID with the boys. I understand this week we got a breakout with girls in the COVID, so hopefully everything will be fine very soon. That's all I have.
Yeah. Had an email from Dr. Hale, and she mentioned that Coach Hardy for our volleyball team will be retiring after this year, so we're going to definitely miss her. And congratulations to her and all her efforts. I think there was a write-up in the paper about that, so it was a great write-up for her. So congratulations to Coach Hardy, all of her accomplishments, and we'll miss her and look forward to getting a new coach to try to fill her shoes going forward, so. Completing some SOL and CTE testing also, Dr. Hale reported. Over at Yellow Branch, had some correspondence with Ms. Brown. About twelve days of reading incentive going on at their school, which is a great program through December. Want to thank all of our speakers tonight. Mr. Markey, I didn't know, yeah, there you are. Thanks for coming out. Hear you and your concerns. Can't make any promises, but we'll definitely keep those concerns, or I will, in our mind going forward through the budget here. So thanks for coming out this evening. And, yeah, to echo Dr. Johnson's comments, Dr. Johnson and I did speak earlier today actually about the concerns of CRT and the training going forward, so we are sensitive to those matters. Like I said, I realize we may not be acting quite as quickly as everybody would like, but be patient and know that we're hearing your concerns and we'll address those as best we can going forward, so. Mr. Stevens, in regards to the article, yes, I did post the article. I can't speak to the complete factuality, but I think it was plenty of facts in the article. That's all I'll have to say about that. And I think that is all I had, so thank you, Dr. Miller.
Thank you. Mr. Epperson?
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight and speaking both on the budget and just sharing your overall concerns. I'd also like to welcome Ms. Parker to the board, looking forward to working with you this coming year, so. That's all I have.
I'd like to congratulate Dr. Miller on chairmanship and Mr. Phillips, thank you for everything you did last year. And Altavista Elementary had a little busy month in December. They did a penny war for gratitude. They raised twenty-three hundred dollars that they donated to the National Center for healthy veterans there in Altavista. Wendy Thomas and Jesse Herndon, I guess it was a fundraiser, you get to throw a pie at your favorite school employee. I probably should have got into that. But Wendy Thomas and Jesse Herndon both got pied. They gave away seventy-five coats that were donated by local organizations to the kids. Eighty-five kids, thirty-two families received gift boxes and food baskets from the Angel Tree donations. That's all I have.
Ms. Parker?
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm glad to be here. I'm honored to have been voted by my constituents to be here. I hope that I don't disappoint anyone. I did want to talk about some of the places that I stand and have stood before regarding masks optional or COVID policies, things like that. And people ask me, what can we do? SB thirteen oh-three is the law that all school boards are hanging their hat on. So if you still have a desire for any change, we really need public and community support through our delegates and senators and the General Assembly that starts on January 12th. That's two days from today. So obviously you can't speak to us about it again until February, but you can call your delegates and senators tomorrow. Thank you guys so much.
Jones?
Glad to see everybody tonight. First thing, I'd like to thank David for his leadership over the past year. I think you did an extraordinary job through some tough times and just appreciate direction and what you did for the board. Welcome, Ms. Parker. Look forward to working with you. If there be any assistance to you, don't hesitate to ask. Congratulations to Dr. Miller and Mr. Epperson for their new roles and look forward to working with you guys for the coming year. And really, I just want to express my appreciation to all of the teachers, staff, just all the personnel that are working their rear ends off through all this stressful time and are hanging tough and dealing with, I, I don't know, I mean, I've been doing this a long time and I've never heard teachers feel like they're under a lot of stress. I mean, it just, just compassion goes out to them, but they're under a lot of stress. And I just, just appreciate everything they do. And hopefully we can work to reward them during this, you know, upcoming budget, you know, planning so forth, so. Dr. Miller said something about the donations, and the donations are really extraordinary. Across the county, there are people that are generous and have helped a lot of programs, projects, and individuals during this past season. It's just extraordinary and just, you know, have a great amount of appreciation for people that just give from their hearts to help others. And certainly want to thank Coach Hardy, wish her best wishes and, and express our gratitude for everything, all the successes she's brought to Rustburg High School and her coaching. And that's all I got.
Thank you. I would just like to say a couple of things. One, I want to recognize Supervisor Klein and Supervisor Carwell, who joined us today. I too want to thank David for doing a great job last year as a chairman and you directed this board with decisive leadership, and I appreciate that. It's going to be tricky to follow that. I want to thank Mrs. Torrance, is she still here? For what she brought to our attention about the technology because I hadn't seen it from that standpoint. And I think that that's important for us to recognize, and I think that discussion needs to be had. So we were very, very grateful that we could get, you know, laptops and iPads in each student's hands to expedite use of technology. And looked at that as a complete asset. And so I think we need to take that seriously and follow up on that. Yeah. As far as Ms. Coman, I want to echo a little bit about what Dr. Johnson said. I also had a conversation with Dr. Johnson. So these conversations are being had. And you saw the same guidelines that we did. We don't have any more information than, than you do. And those are guidelines that Campbell County will formulate our own policy. And I'm confident that our policies will reflect Campbell County values. I'm also pretty confident that things are going to change in a couple of weeks. And I would like to just ask you to be patient and see what happens with that. This may all become a mute point, I don't know. But I do want you to know that we are talking and we are, I'm confident that it will reflect Campbell County values. And I think that's all I've got.
Ms. Chairman, I'm sorry. I was remiss. And I wanted to recognize Michaela Coffey from DSBA. Is Michaela here? She is annually someone, she works at the DSBA office in Charlottesville, so welcome to Rustburg. And thanks for coming out and being, being a resource to this board when needed.
All right. Anybody else need to add anything? It looks like we have a closed meeting for an executive meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move that we convene in a closed meeting for discussion or consideration of disciplinary matters or other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning students in the school division, specifically students twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and number thirty from 2021, '22 school year in accordance with section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A two of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we will meet in a closed meeting. Did you get all that?
What's that?
I asked for a motion certifying that to the best of each member's knowledge that during our closed meeting, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered in the meeting by the school board.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right, that motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the administration's recommendations on students number twenty-eight, twenty-nine and thirty.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Motion adjourned.
Motion, and Mr. Phillips, second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right.
See y'all next Tuesday.
I'd just like to say, go Dawgs.
Football game will still be going when you get home?
Man, there was some crazy football yesterday.
When you be, if you were a betting person, you had a bunch of money, bet on those?